We're good. I have to call this meeting to order. The governing, governing school board, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District, and good old Rio Rico, Arizona. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? And Ms. Brown, would you please lead us?
I am the leader of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. This moment.
Present.
Present. Who is this last?
Present.
I'm here, so we have four months, we're gonna have a four month. Adoption of the agenda, I sort of move.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that we move the item D, remove high school system principal to the next item after called up.
Given that change, a very motion to, as Mr. Rado suggested.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. Call to the public. To the public. Okay, so I'm logged in. Assistant principal.
I'm sorry, no go. Wanted to recognize that we have for your recommend, or for your approval today, a recommendation for assistant principal of Rio Rico High School. I'm gonna ask Mr. Canoy to come up here. Principal of the high school. Went through the process and is making the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Verdugo. I had the pleasure of getting to know Ms. Pearson this year as the teacher of my daughter, seventh grade honors English teacher. And all year long, I only heard amazing things about her. It's not because she was a teacher that was friends with everyone, it's because she held everyone accountable. He felt like she learned how to write and she learned how to process literacy. And then I met Heather during an interview process for assistant principal at that one need to high school. And I was impressed with her so much that when I learned there that I had the opportunity to hire for my position at Rio Rico High School, I contacted her and to see if she was interested. And luckily, what we were able to make things work. She's a master teacher. She knows data. She knows high school kids. She knows the area she taught at O'Gallus High School for years. So she has roots here. And I just feel very fortunate to be here as principal of Rio Rico High School, asking that you approve Heather Pearson to be the assistant principal, my first administrative hire as principal. Thank you, so excited.
Bobian.
Are we questioning Ms. Pearson?
I just wanna know if you have any comments, anybody?
It sounds like this is a very good fit. Thank you.
Mr. Beach.
Ah, welcome home.
Thank you. It does feel like a homecoming.
Yeah, yeah.
Soskis.
Welcome to Rio Rico again. Looking forward to.
You're welcome. And we have a tough assignment, but I feel that we're in good hands. If Mr. Canoy recommended you, I have full faith in you to spank him good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Moving right along, superintendent contract. Notice is hereby given to the general. We need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. So do I hear a motion to approve Heather Pearson as assistant principal of Rio Rico High School?
Still moved.
Say again. A motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry about that, Pearson. We want you really bad. Okay, now we'll be here. Executive session, welcome. Superintendent contract. Notice is hereby given to the general public that the governing board may be able to convene an executive session pursuant to ARS thirty eight, four, three, one, point oh three, A three, and four. I read it slowly for you.
Thank you.
Soskis. For consultation for the advice of the board's attorney regarding superintendent's employment, contracts, and for discussion or consultation with the board's attorney regarding the board's position on contracts, superintendent, that is a title you are the subject of negotiation. So do I hear a motion to convene to executive session in room one twenty five in the conference room?
Still moved.
Second. A motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Anvia, it's the same German.
What?
Anvia.
John and then we a stayer. John, they need a stayer.
We can be first.
Right, of course. So do I hear a motion to reconvene to the other session, Santa Cruz Valley Unified Thirty Five?
Thanks for coming.
Boardroom.
Still moved. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. So as we've been given no direction, we are skipping on to subject B. I meant to ESI agreement. So do I hear a motion to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty four amendment to the educational services and company agreement and related exhibit C?
Still moved.
Second. For motion a second. Do we have any, do we have any discussion? As Bobian.
I, I'm just a little confused. The direction to the attorney, did we not need to do that? Okay, thank you.
Is there no, no change? Any direction?
Thank you.
Okay. So do I hear a motion to approve the twenty twenty three amendment to the educational?
Yeah, you got that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the superintendent contract for Mr. David Verdugo? Still move.
Second.
In a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Zero. Now I can say congrats.
Congrats.
If I may say a few words. First, I wanna thank the board for entrusting me to continue on as superintendent and leading the district and being part of this community has been just humbling. And I truly appreciate the support from the board. It's been a big week for my family. My brother was just named the athletic director at Wisconsin Eau Claire. So on Thursday, so I'm gonna take his, his words. He thanked me in his speech, and so I wanted to thank him for all of his support, my family's support, my wife and my kids and everybody. It is kind of fitting, it's Father's Day weekend, because as my brother mentioned in his speech, our parents have been so instrumental in us and how we've developed, not only in our job, but as people. So I wanna thank my, my parents, especially my father, he was the administrator for forty years. And so I always aspired to be half as good as him. And by doing that, I knew I would be okay. So I wanna thank him for all of his work. And also thank my, my family, my wife for all of his work. It's going into year ten as a superintendent, it's, it's a lot of, of time and, but I really do love working here. When I was a kid, my, my dream job was obviously being a professional athlete. That never happened. But what I really did not know, that working here would be my dream job. And being here has been my dream for me, to be able to lead our district and do the things that we've been able to do. So again, thank you for entrusting me to do that. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, consent agenda. Does anybody have anything that they would like to remove from the consent agenda? I'd like to remove number one. And one specifically, what have to do with the consent agenda, item fourteen. Number fifteen. Attached personnel action request, E part. So do I hear a motion to pass the consent agenda without those two aforementioned?
Still moved. Second.
Have a motion a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on May twenty third, twenty twenty three, which is number fourteen. I was reading there and it, the notes didn't state what Ms. Bobian had told us that day, which was quoted by the international, which was that that was the saddest resignation that she ever had to say aye to. So I just wanted to make that clear before I'm going to sign that for the record. That will become very important later on, very, very important.
So you'd like that added to the minutes?
Yes, I like it corrected. Like the words exactly like they were said. Thank you. So do I hear a motion to pass that? Number one, so move. A motion a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Number fifteen. I have to really look at this because I wanna be specific so we don't have to waste. Go through each single one. I wanted to mention, I wanted to talk about Mr. McElrath, being advisor to the art club. And he's getting, I think he definitely deserves this. And he's getting three hundred and seventy five dollars for it. Yeah, it's great that he's doing that, but I'd like to see him in the future get more for it. I think he's really worth it. He's done magnificent things for us. And I want to commend you sort of as I think that was a great move to put him there. And he's done nothing but wonderful things for our district. All the words he got for us. He's just a great guy. We both know all the stuff he did at Cal Bassas as well, of course, in the past, but he's a really good person. So I just wanted to mention that. Also, I wanted to mention that I think Alex Brash is just a great, it's gonna make a great head coach for cross country. So she's a great athlete, very dedicated, and all the picks have done great things for our district, and I wanted to recognize that. Goes to you too, Tyler, because you started it all, you and your wife. It says that one person can't make a difference. Moving right along, there were some things that were mentioned and with regard to. Just one moment. Yeah, with regard to the students and why they weren't, why we got the late E parts? I was wondering, Ms. Lunderwell, if you could explain that a little more thoroughly? Because I didn't quite understand your note very well.
Um, I believe that there's just one, um, sorry. I believe that there was one student on that list, correct, or two?
Or you said students, though.
Okay. I believe there's two students on that list. Um, we had several students graduate and, and choose to return for the summer hours. Um, and so we were short.
Why didn't those students take the job when they were doing the job?
Um, a few of them have already left the area to pursue their post-secondary plan.
Right, I read the thing that you said. That one, you mentioned that fix this so that we don't have late E parts anymore. Something with regard to the schedule, but I wondered, how is that going to change people from saying no to us right in the middle of a, of a joke?
Because part of it was because we hadn't determined whether we were going to hire summer help because of funding and finding individuals. And so when I approved it, then we were going to hire the ones that were already on staff previously, but then those individuals were not. So we'll try to make sure that we have the funding organized prior to the summer. We do want to endeavor to hire summer help and, and our students gives an opportunity to work, but also gives us the needed support in our, our schools to move and do other things that we have to get done.
Right, okay. Well, I know several governing board members haven't been too thrilled about the late stuff and the cart being put before the morgue, so I'm sorry to bring it up because we, as you well know, we don't really like to see that kind of stuff later on, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind of notes. Appreciate you. Okay, so do I hear a motion to pass number fifteen of the consent agenda? Still move.
Second.
A motion a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Trust policies.
Thank you. So now this is, the majority of our, our day going to be spent today reviewing policies. So as you know, we are no longer gonna continue with the Arsenal School Board Association. So now we are moving towards the trust. And the trust has worked really hard with our policies and really streamlined what they look like, but also, as the board knows, one of the main reasons was for cost. But in addition to the cost, one of the things that I think you will, will see as a board is that they're much more user friendly. They're able to be able to be looked at, adjusted, and changed. Question.
I apologize, Mr. Verdugo, but I think Mr. Merd has removed number fourteen from the consent agenda, and I don't know that we went. No, I didn't. Only fifteen. Fifteen? Yes.
I heard fourteen too.
I said fifteen. I, I thought I heard one, one.
The audio is really low today.
I said fifteen, clearly. Fourteen, fifteen. If I did, I didn't mean to, and we can, because we.
There's no penalty involved.
Yep. Do you wanna go back and make sure?
Everything was approved. We're good.
We're good. Okay. Are you sure? All right. So as you were saying, in regard to the trust.
That again, the policies are streamlined and we are able to create and work with our own policies, which is what we do as a district anyway, because that's the job of the board is to create the policies to guide our district. And then is an administrative job to administer and work with those. So I'd like to invite Jennifer McLennan, who is from the trust, who's gonna review our policies. And today what we're doing is we're doing just an overview, looking at what we created already, what the base policies are that the trust has created. You can make any recommendations, things that, that we will then adopt on the twenty seventh at our board meeting. And then from there, we will then take a deep dive throughout the year to make sure that they're what we want them to be. So it's, so it's gonna be a longer process, so, but we need to get policies in place for July one, because that's, June thirtieth is when the policies expire for ASBA. And so we need to have something in place for July one.
Thank you, governing board president, members of the governing board superintendent. I'm very honored to be here today, working to review our policy services. If I can just give a little brief overview of what the process was.
Sure, of course.
And, and let me start by myself and who I am, because you haven't worked for me before. So I work, I have dual roles. As of January first, I spent half my time working for my law firm, Mr. Rosenfelder, where I was a partner for many years. And then I am, as of January first, I'm spending half my time doing exactly what we're doing today, which is as a consultant for the trust, rolling out the model policies. I was privileged to be a part of a four law firm team that created the policies. It took us about nine months. Your own beloved Denise Lowell was one of those four lawyers, as well as Denise Bayton of Deconseil McDonald, a gentleman named Chris Welker, who is the primary law firm that uses for their liability risks. The four of us spent maybe a weekend, about six months, creating the policies, vetting them. They've been vetted by various stakeholders, both in business services and the HR world, superintendents, in-house councils, so. And then they were rolled out last fall. We have two districts that have signed up and are using them currently, Dice Art Unified and Queen Creek. We have approximately, the time we're all set and done, we'll have about fourteen districts I believe, that will be adopting like you as of July one. So Kyrene Elementary's gone through a process, Flagstown Unified's gone through a process, those are the probably the biggest, but then lots of rural districts as well. And so first of all, I just wanna commend you for, you're doing the board's work today, the two primary, that you have hiring of the superintendents and looking at policy. So you're, you're covering all that in a Saturday, so I really appreciate you for your time and doing that today. And I wanna try to make this process as easy as possible. And so without that, we can, we can get started if you'd like. Let me give you a brief overview of how the policy manual works. There are both proposed policies, which you would adopt, and then procedures, which would be similar to your existing regulations. The procedures are sort of the meat and bones of how you go about fulfilling district business. Those would be up to your cabinet and your superintendent to revise as they see fit. Typically, the superintendent would show the board, we're making these changes to procedures, but you wouldn't adopt. But any changes to policies, you would adopt. And so there are five chapters. Chapter one is about the board's work. So it's gonna see topics that you're very familiar with, open meeting law, how you elect the president, your rules of order, those types of things. Chapter two is very. Um, chapter two is there, superintendent of administrative duties, two policies. What superintendent Verdugo's duties are and how you evaluate them, that's it. Then chapter three is the business operations side of the house. Um, and your own Isella Brown, I had the privilege of working with when I was the attorney for ASBATE, so I know, um, Ms. Brown well. And she's done a really good job of looking through chapter three and, uh, and making sure that it fits for Santa Cruz Valley. Um, as well as making sure that it's appropriate for the work that she does. And as she noted this morning, there are areas of, um, chapter three that address. What I would call operational things, so things like security controls, things like records. Um, so it's got some things in it that weren't traditionally in what would be your policy manual D E F. Um, but we've put them into the operational side of the house because that's where we thought they made the most sense to go. Chapter four is HR. It's streamlined, different than your current existing policies in that. We didn't separate out how you treat classified and how you treat certificated. They're merged together as they should be. You all are one family, right? And so we treat them as the same, um, and unless we're required to differentiate by statute, but in which case we do. And then chapter five is the largest section by far. Um, chapter five is the, um, student section. And Denise Lowery's office, Yural Shamway wrote most of chapter five. So I'm very familiar with them because I've worked with policies and obviously worked in this area for many years. But those, those specifically Denise Lowery's office wrote chapter one, chapter five, and then we all had input into each other's sections. So that's kind of how it goes. I think it might be easiest if Shannon doesn't mind to, to start and we'll start rolling through. If that's how you'd like to proceed, Mr. Ramirez?
Sure, uh, that's how the rest of the governing board. Anybody have any objection?
So, um, chapter one is on district's legal boundary. Oh, thank you very much. There, there are my old eyes helping. So chapter one, uh, the first policy, one, one oh one, is just a delineation of the district's, uh, legal description and the boundaries. So very simple. But if I need to move so you can see above my head. Um, and so that, that's it. I did put the July.
Hold up just a little bit more.
Perfect. So that's, that's what this, this policy is. I don't know how you'd like me to proceed if you've got any questions on this, it's. If you wanna scroll down then, Shannon. And, um, I guess if you could go back up, Shannon, that, so the policies, um. Policies themselves cite the legal authorities. When this, um, when, if and when the board adopts on June twenty-seventh. Um, these policies will go eventually onto a site called Microscribe. I'd love it. It's so much easier to use than PolicyBridge. If you all have ever gone on a, the PolicyBridge website, it's a little cumbersome. Microscribe, you can easily search, and then these will be lively. So these are the, when, when it says legal authority, the blue highlighted ARS statutes. Um, are the statutes that pertain to your legal obligation to create that policy. And so, um, the policies will have citations to the statutes, the procedures do not. Now go ahead and.
Spell check issue on that slide.
Shall we wear?
Country, school, super.
Oh, there you go, country, thank you, very good catch. See, doing the bird's work already, okay. Um, then one, one oh two is the board's authorities, responsibilities and immunities. As you all know, um, you have authority vested in you by the Arizona Constitution and state law. And then you also have immunities that are given to you by statute, and so this outlines those responsibilities. As we've talked about, um, the hiring of the superintendent, developing of your mission, that sort of thing. Those are the powers and duties, some of your powers and duties. Um, and it talks specifically about how as individual board members, you lack authority, it's only when you come together as a public body. That you have the authority to govern. That's what that policy's about. Recognizes that superintendent Verdugo would speak for you first and foremost. Um, although obviously the board can give direction to him regarding that, that clarifies that. This is just the oath of office provision, um, your governing board immunities, as we talked about, are prescribed by statute.
Jennifer, can you move?
Like.
So we wanna.
Move down.
All right there, that's fine, now you pass it, go back.
A little bit more down.
All right there. Where it says, uh, the board takes legal action, uh, provide board members with the authority to speak on behalf of the district. Does that mean a, a board member cannot speak to the paper unless we approve it, or?
That's a very good question. No, you retain your First Amendment right to speak as a member of the public. But if you're speaking on behalf of the district, it has to be either through your superintendent or as a board. Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this policy?
And just, just to clarify that, so it, it means that you can't say, I'm speaking for the board unless, unless the board approves. So like if even a, uh, like a letter to the editor, um, you can say you're a board member, but you can't do it. Um, saying that this is what the board expresses unless the. Says we're directing board member to be a spokesperson for that, yes.
What do you do in the event that somebody knows that you're, you're a teacher and a board member? You write a little letter, private letter, but yet they slam, they put that there on. You didn't do that, that wasn't your intention.
Right, it, it, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board.
Still maintain your First Amendment?
You do, you maintain your First Amendment right. Some of, some of the board's policies will address sort of those things, such as, you know, you, you are, you have an ethical responsibility to. Uphold the decisions that the board members make as a whole, right? Um, so, um, if you're speaking out against a decision that's maybe that's kind of against your board policy and some of those. So, um. As my favorite clients, uh, before I switched over my role, were the clients that were in the outside. Parts of our valley up there and in the rural areas, because like you, we really are here for all the right reasons. So I don't, I don't think this will be a practical issue that you all face, but it's certainly addressed. It looks like you made it a little bit easier, Shannon, right? So, um, so if we wanna scroll down to the next policy then, I think we're probably ready for that. I might maybe go back up to communication protocols since there were some questions about that. So, um, this is kind of addresses your question, Mr. Ramirez and Mr. Beach, that communication from community members to the board. You would direct to the district administration for processing. It also has a sentence in there that you wouldn't consider or refer anonymous complaints. I don't know if that's what you typically do, but if you wanna edit that, you can. Um, and so that's, uh, that's where that is, so.
And that, and that's really, you know, uh, an issue to our, our community, not in a negative way. It's just that, uh, people feel very comfortable speaking to you at Garrett's. Yeah, and so, so that, so that policy then directs you to, to rec, tell them. Uh, either you're going to tell me that this information, uh, but if it's, if they're like, oh, I don't want, uh, anonymous. Then it really dies there because we need to know, if we're gonna correct the issue. We, we need to know what the issue is, and that includes knowing who it's coming from. And so that, and then you can also direct them, we do have, um, the, the, the call to public. We also have forms that if they wanna make a complaint, that we will be adding to our, our policies as, um. That we currently have in our policies, it, it's a, a complaint from a community member, a complaint from, uh. Even, uh, parent or teacher, whatever it may be, there's that process that they can provide that. If they don't feel comfortable, but again, the, the anonymous is very difficult, and that's why I'm glad we're keeping that if the board chooses to. Because it really makes it difficult for us to correct a problem from an anonymous source.
One thing I wanna say about that is that when that happens and we do inform you. Then I would expect that it would be shared with entire board, because there've been times when it hasn't been shared with entire board. And that makes me worry.
Shannon, could you go back a little ways? I just, I wanna, no, I, yeah. I wanna point out one nuance of this policy, right? One more click and you'll be there. So right there where it said board members request for information, this is a new addition that we took. Um, based upon feedback that we got from various boards, is that if one board member, uh, and you again won't have this dysfunction, given. What I've observed already today, but if one board member is dominating the district administration's time, asking for a lot of materials. And it's gonna take the district administration a lot of time and proceed it, that would come back for the board as a whole to vote to say that's a good use of administrative time. So that's a, a nuance that's new to these policies. Okay, now I think.
And that's what you're asking right there, is, is that if, if it does come to me and it's. Even though maybe specific to what, something you want, that I would share it with entire board.
I wasn't, what I was thinking, I was just thinking of serious issues that are brought to you. Not, not anything that I particularly wanted to.
Uh, policy one, one oh three is the governing board organization, it's just as the things that you're used to, your organizational meeting, you pick the president in January. So keep going through that. Um, the board presidency and that, do those duties, that's what that policy's about. One, one oh four is, uh, the provision regarding, um, legal counsel, using the outside counsel, initiation of lawsuits. So you can keep scrolling through that, obtaining legal advice, who's authorized to get that legal advice. Uh, this is, one, one oh five is your board conflict of interest policy, this is prescribed by statute. So, uh, nuances, you know, you have a daughter working in the district, that daughter's not a dependent, your board is supposed to, you know, approve that, that sort of thing. But this has the whole policy regarding relatives.
Reese Allen has a question.
In this, I guess in the current legislative sessions, isn't, hasn't end really ended.
Right.
Um, there's one that is going to allow. Its relatives and board members to become substitutes.
Correct. Correct.
If that is approved, and I don't know if it's been approved, then we would come back and modify this policy.
A very good question, thank you, Ms. Brown. So our office is monitoring the legislation. I will be the one primarily responsible for making updates to policy that are required by legislature. The legislature and their infinite wisdom have just bought me some time because they're not, they're gonna reconvene in July. Uh, which I said, phew, so I've got all summer to make sure that I'm, uh. Creating updates to the policy manual, which you would get from the trust now. They'll be, um, if you are familiar with the technical information bulletins that the trust puts out, so we'll put them out in that same year. Um, I will be vetting them, whatever policy changes that I'm gonna be suggesting that we make. I'll be vetting them through the same law firms that originally created the policies, so that we get input. And then, uh, those policy changes will roll out just like they always did.
To clarify, it says its spouses, correct, is what they were adding, because, because family members can already be. Um, hired by the, the district, it's, it's spouses, that a spouse is the only one that is. Um, the conflict of interest that, uh, has not been allowed, um, whether it be any employee of. In any way within the district, not just a teacher, so we couldn't hire a spouse, um, of a board member.
Mr. Verdugo's corrected, spouse is currently under the existing state law. So as you all are aware, once legislature, uh, ends their session, then the laws that become effective ninety days later. So that's, um, the process that we would be evaluating, um, changes, but you're exactly right. So there will be a change to this policy, once that goes into effect. Uh, Governor Hobbs is gonna be a, a solid this session, and she's vetoed almost everything, so we, so my work will be pretty limited, I think. Okay. I'll keep going, this is again, um, just about your conflict of interest, um, if you are selling to the district. Mandatory disclosure statements and conflict of interest forms. Um, then that, this is just a procedure on how you would disclose your conflicts, if you have any. And then this policy is, so the, um. When we came together as the body of lawyers that created this policy, um, it was very important to us that. Your anti-discrimination policies be front and center of your policy manual, and so we put those in chapter one. Your, your responsibility to ensure that your working environment is, um, free of harassment and discrimination. And so that's why this policy's first and foremost to your students, um, that they all have the equal. Uh, opportunity to be educated in your district. And so that just explains their due process, and then the next procedure is very detailed.
Could you slow down on the scrolling, because we're trying to read a few and then.
There a little bit. So that's that policy. Have its discrimination on any basis. And then the next, but you'll see that there are three areas that the policy creates. Is the designation of a compliance officer, a process for investigating and appropriate due process standards. And so the next procedure is very detailed, and it goes through all of those items. So, uh, a whole host of definitions about the various statutes that are covered. And then the next section would be about how you would apply the complaint processes. Examples of, of discrimination and, um, these, this set of policies was written by Denise Lowery and. Designed to be compliant with what the Office of Civil Rights has required. And districts are investigated by the Office of Civil Rights.
Copies.
So I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that maybe you want a different way of viewing?
Yeah, hard copies.
Do you want hard copies better? Okay.
A lot of them, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get you a hard copy.
It's pretty cut and dry. What if we wanna make changes, though, we won't be able to do it until we. Only today, right?
No, no, it's a year, yeah, you'll, you'll have. Yeah, you'll, you'll, cause you're, today is a, today is a, today is an over. Share what we've already, as the admin team has already reviewed and, and shared with.
Yeah, the only reason I ask, is you said we had copies, I was looking, yeah.
Electronic copies I, I shared with you guys.
Oh, that one. Yeah. It's in, it's in your email.
Thank you.
Um, and I did hear, uh, some questioning about, um, your ability to suggest changes. And so what I would suggest that you do, if, um, once we've done with this overview today, and it, and this is. An enormous amount of material to take in. But what I would suggest you do is that, um, you have Ms. Lopez either give you, um, you know, hard copies or a download of what these look like. And then any changes that you have individually, you could suggest to Mr. Verdugo and we. Bring those changes back to you, um, on, on, um, July, and June twenty-seventh. Um, as well as, you know, I've been in contact, I was with Ms. Wolbre over the week, and I've told her about your efforts here today. And so my intent, once we get done with the phones today, is to give these, um. Process to the, the versions that you're considering for the twenty-seventh to her, in case she has any additional changes to suggest as your legal counsel.
And again, what we're gonna, that, that, it's gonna be a, a year-long process, uh, for us to, to change over. So, so what we're doing today is, is that beginning so that we can get, uh, adoption on the twenty-seventh. Um, so any changes before then, we're obviously happy to make them. And then once we start in July, we'll, we'll take a deep dive into each chapter. Um, and just make sure that it's what the board wants, and then add any additional, uh, procedural items, make it changes, things like that. Because, uh, what we, again, what we wanna do is just make sure we have an overview, adopt them, so that we have something in place as our current policies expire. It's, it's gonna be a long process, so, but we just, uh, so that's why I did share with you the copies. Um, for your review previously, but we'll do it again, it's no, no, no issue. It, it is a lot of information to, to digest.
Just tell me what it is, you don't have to do that again, I'll just.
And so I, uh, on the screen right now, you'll note that these have been personalized for Sam Cruz Valley to name Melissa as the. Um, superintendent in charge of receiving complaints under this policy as the compliance officer. And these are additional due process provisions. This is the investigation of the file. The decision of the compliance officer, how it's appealed. General uh, responsibilities of the district to make sure that the students are safe. This policy is a very similar policy that applies to anyone working in your district or visiting your district. So it's the EEO policy that would apply. To others, not to students. It has definitions in a similar fashion as the one we just looked at. Uh, defines harassment and, and as unwelcome conduct. Um, has a specific session on sexual harassment. You'll see next that we do have a separate policy on Title Nine because that's so specific. But gives examples. And again, a very detailed procedure about how long would make. Procedure as well. And so I'm sorry, here's the Title Nine policy, one, two, oh, three. Title Nine is the federal statute that requires you to um, not allow discrimination on the basis of sex. And it's got some very, very detailed. Compliance procedures that apply just to that statute. So it's got its own policy. And it's on set of definitions. Plus supportive measures, the purpose. So it's very specific. Again, this has uh, very specifically requires by policy that you name who the compliance officer is. That's listed in here and how you contact that individual. And then requisite notice, requisite reporting, um, how, what, what you do if you have an allocation of sexual harassment under the policy. And then a very detailed pres- agreements procedure to comply with and understand your title line process. The investigation process uh, related to all of, and all of these things are very laid out in. Some very complicated federal regulations. So this policy would make you compliant with those items. Now we're moving on from the EEO section to um, government board meetings. So. One, three oh one is your rules of order that you're very adept at doing this already, how you make a motion, um, how, what it seems to pass a motion, that's one thing. One, three oh two is your open meeting law policy. So this is compliance with open meeting laws. Definitions of committees that might have to comply, executive sessions, legal actions, definitions of a meeting. These are all prescribed by statute. How often you have a first meeting, where your notices are. And agendas. So minutes, uh, your public call to the public and what's involved with call to the public. And then emergency board meetings. So again, just all compliance um, with regard to open meeting law is in chapter one. Uh, chapter three, or section one, three oh two, three oh three, excuse me, is the adoption of board policies. Um, the trusts, you, you can have two reads like you're used to, but the trust suggests there's no legal requirement. So the. Existing policy um, simply has that you would adopt at a board meeting after review. But if you want to have a two read, you could add that to your policy manual. Um, you could also at any time, if you're not ready to vote, to move a policy forward, you could. And then one, four oh one, um, now we're into parents' rights. So again, for the same reasons that we wanted. The obligations regarding your equal employment opportunity to be front and center of the policy manual. We wanted the parents' bill of rights to also be a part of front and center. So in chapter one, we've gone through what the parents' bill of rights is. And what your requirements are under state law to comply with that statute. Your parents are your community, right? That's what this statute is about, access to information and um, you know, and everything regarding what's in. One, six oh one and one, six oh two. And then this is a procedure that governs the parents' bill of rights. Again, this follows state law. Um, as to what you are and are not required to do with respect to curriculum and um. Many of these, you'll see that we, this is one area, probably the only area, we tried really hard not to cross reference. So say, look at this policy, look at that policy, but this one we did. So uh, this was Denise's call and she. And mo- most of this procedure is saying, look, if you're worried about this issue, go look at this policy. We tried really hard not to do that because it's annoying, right? So, and I think that takes us to the end of chapter one. Questions globally? Right. Shannon, are you ready to pull up chapter two?
Anybody have any questions?
Okay, chapter two is easy sneeze. Two, one oh one listed duties of the superintendent. Um, there are specific areas where we delegated having the board delegate authority of the superintendent. So for instance. State law requires that Mr. Verdugo issued preliminary notices of inadequate classroom performance. Um, and that you delegate to him that duty. We also have a delegation that's very important here regarding purchases. Um, not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars would be delegated to Mr. Verdugo without the board approval. So those, those are two important pieces of this. Again, the board can customize this. That's the chapter one on, and chapter two on, or chapter one to a one. Policy is on evaluating the superintendent. So it just says they were going to evaluate. And uh, that that would occur executive session, um, and that it can be in writing. So it gives you a lot of wiggle. If you chose.
Well, I'd have to find it in a second.
Um, so that those are the, again. Fashion policies are very succinct. Um, and that's, those are them. And if you want to add to them, you can. I heard Mr. Verdugo talk about um, accessing, having members of the public come, um, having forms that would. Address complaint. The trust did not create a model complaint policy. Because frankly, we, we, in the attorney's opinion, that should be addressed by your administration. And if the board is unhappy with. How those complaints are being addressed, then you can take issue with your uh, your chief executive officer, right? Um, so if you are gonna have, you could create a complaint policy here, or you could simply upload the forms. And put that in as part of the duties of the superintendent is to address those complaints. There are specific areas where under federal or state law, you have to have a very specified complaint process. Such as EEO complaints. And so we've created that in the policy manual. But you know, general, I don't like how, I don't like the grade, my child god, I don't want, I'm unhappy with my transfer to a different campus. Those kinds of things would be addressed first with your administration. All right, I think we're ready to move on to chapter three. Again, chapter three is broad, covers a lot of different areas, the first section of which is um, the fiscal management. These are again, very prescribed by statute. The first three oh one oh one is your budget adoption. You know, next to the two roles that you're doing today, um, probably your third most important option is looking at your, your financial oversight. And so this um, governs your requirements related to budget adoption, which you all are used to, you know, when you adopt the budget, you have to take a roll call mode, that kind of thing. So.
I just want to say something with regard to this. Mr. Kramer made a really good point when he wrote you with regard to allowing Ms. Brown. Will streamline things so that you can take care of business without the board always having to be involved. So I just thought I'd mention that and to all the other governing board members that he had thought that Ms. Brown should. Streamline this the best that she could, so that we don't have to always be involved in every little thing that sometimes aren't.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Which is certainly one of those areas where you have to rely upon the expertise of uh, your staff, correct? You are to have this a lot, so. Um, okay, and so then three, one oh one is the budget adoption and then the procedure is how it's prepared. And then this is um, the access and publishing requirements. As you know, you're required to publish notice of your budget. And so this governs those publishing requirements. And to Mr. Ramirez's point, this puts this in the regulation. So it's clearly a procedure and it's clearly on the um. It is clear, clearly the responsibility of the district administration to make sure that these items are complied with. Um, talks about amending your budget, the process that you all are familiar with withholding a. Is involved in this section. Uh, three, one oh two is your revenue, um, how you are accounting for funds. And what you're required to do by statute when accounting for funds. And this is the procedure regarding the accounting of those monies. And we tried to refer to what is practically used by the business office. So we refer to the uniform system of financial records. Often, um, and then the state statutes. And this particular, you know, the, the business office is a difficult, complicated school finance, worked in this area for five years and I. So double check things. This, I could go back up to that procedure, please. I'm sorry, the uh, B, I think three, one oh two B. Um, so this procedure, Ms. Brown edited for your use um, to. Allow you to invest items, but not acquire you. And I see there is a capitalization that will correct and that the governing board should be lowercase. Three, one oh two B. Okay, and then next, um, so I see your office has made edits as well as to this, uh. Not to this procedure, I believe there's an edit of a bank account that was added by Ms. Brown. To your indirect bank account. Talks about bank, and so that indirect cost account, that number five, D five was added by Ms. Brown as well. Uh, cash control, this is your internal controls that you're gonna use so that you don't have anyone steal from you. So. All those good things, how you handle petty cash. Um, and then student activities, there are specific state laws that govern student activities. And so um, that's uh, where this procedure comes in.
Before we leave that, just, just so that uh, the board is aware, um, annually, or actually, and frequently, we get reports from the auditor general about. Uh, specifically a lot of issues with cash control and embezzlement and things of that nature. So it's very important that Ms. Brown review this policy, make sure that our staff knows this policy and they follow those instructions. Because there's nothing uh, more uh, important than that as far as it goes out publicly and and so the utter general. Frequently, I, I think I just got one the other day, um, in fact, uh, of somebody that had embezzled like, and it's. Not always these astronomical amounts, it's two thousand dollars, four thousand dollars, but it's. Have those policies in place and make our staff aware that they're trained. And then that's the reason I bring that up is that. Ms. Brown does it annually, uh, to make sure our staff, especially with cash control, it's very important that we do that, so. So I want to share that with the board because that, that one comes up frequently um, about the. Any questions on?
I think that to Mr. Verdugo's point, that's very difficult to control and it's not your, under your jurisdiction, but when it's um, for instance, a foundation or. A booster club or a parent organization, those are separate entities. We see a lot of trouble with that too, so. All right, uh, three, one oh three is expenses and payroll, how you're going to conduct your payroll and um, many vouchers to the county. And conferences and the use of credit cards. So again, look at that whole list of statutes you all are responsible for. So and then the procedures under three, one, three are related to your payroll options, your ability. These things are very specific on state law. Um, and so that's governed by state headquarters as well as reference to Arizona Department of. And the state of offices and how, what you're required to do as far as um, providing reimbursement to your employees. And for instance, if they go out of, um, out of the county and they spend money for conferences, would be governing how you would reimburse them. This is again, um, with respect to expenditures, purchase orders, requirements regarding purchase orders are contained within this procedure. And uh, preparing reports and required funding of USFRs. This pol- this procedure governs your use of credit cards, again, trying to make sure that you've got those controls in there so that you. Um, don't have misuse. And then this is a procedure regarding overtime compensation. Um, so again, relating to the, the work week, definition of the work week. Overtime, how that's going to be approved, um, your ability to flex time within the work week. Paying overtime if you are offering someone time off instead, that's the thing. All right, and moving on from kind of the finance area now to property controls, your obligations to create inventories.
I'd just like to say something, the superintendent, with regard to that. We have had people step up for others in positions and I had mentioned it before. And I'd just like to see us maybe have a discussion about that. If we could afford, I don't know, we'll have to ask Ms. Brown over there. Always watching our funds, the guarding of our funds, but. In certain, certain six, certain situations, especially this past year. We had people step up to the plate and take on a lot of responsibility and they didn't get a dime extra for it, right? That just bothers me. When teachers do that and they get compensated, so I'd like to see that for anyone in the district that steps up to the plate in a. Higher position.
If you found more pressure. Yeah, we appreciate that. Hopefully, we'll be able to review that as, as situations come up, we'll bring that to the board. So, um, but thank you for bringing that up.
So uh, thank you very much, Mr. Ramirez. This, this policy that we're looking at talks about how you take care of the things that you buy, right? Your property. Um, so if you're required to create a stewardship list, you're required to. Uh, purchase your supplies in a certain way and have inventory control over those. Um, loss control prevention and then reimbursement, um, if somebody breaks something. So this paragraph right here, for instance, talks about students using district provided textbooks. Um, and your required, requirement to supply those. Um, and so that's. And then this policy, three, one oh five, is the opposite, how do you get rid of things you don't need anymore, um, which is, as you know, very specific on state law. Um, how you perform or surplus, you can't just give it away. That's what this policy and procedure governs. Three, one oh six is your federal grant monies, um, and other funding sources, how you, how you are um, accepting of gifts. As you know, as governing board, I'm sure you're giving gifts, you have that on your agenda. So this is that requirement. And then a procedure for uh, the federal grants and your compliance with any granting.
Just a question, does every single thing, the gift have to be?
It does.
Single thing. Mr. Kramer once asked a question about that.
There is a state law that says that the governing board shall accept gifts and donations. So, and it doesn't have a minimal requirement. And that's especially important, Mr. Ramirez, because when you get into those procurement issues, if you're accepting gifts from the vendor, for instance, that would be. A potential violation of state law. So I think that's why they haven't created a threshold that says if it's, you know, under a hundred dollars, we don't care.
You know, the more the merrier for me. I mean, I, all for me, you know, that, I just was wondering because I was asked that once and I wasn't sure.
No, I'm not aware of anything that would give other than the state procurement code says.
You can see why, I mean, I, again, I'll say it publicly, like I'm, every gift, great, it's gonna help our district wonderful. It's just you can see that sometimes it's a long list of small things. And so that's why one party wouldn't ask me about that.
And, and also just it, it protects the district as well from accepting things that we don't want. Uh, so uh, an example is somebody had accepted uh, some computers from the border patrol. Um, without getting them board approved, um, and then realized that those computers were not workable. And so then we tried to give it back, the border patrol. And so then we tried to give it back, the border patrol refused because they're trying to get rid, they were trying to get rid of them. And because of the disposal cost. So, so then we ended up having to figure out and eat that disposal cost as a district. And so it was something that was, you know, very difficult for that administrator to, to take that. But it's something that's why we have to get everything board approved. Because if, if we would have known that, then we would say, oh, are they workable or any of those type of things? So it's something that protects us from, from making some mistakes as well.
Do we have to return things that are donated to us by mistake? We had that happen, you know, somebody sent us something from California and we really wanted.
The wrong Amazon delivery, that's a very good question, I don't know the answer to, I would probably are required to try.
Yeah, that was a Santa Cruz, California delivery that came to Santa Cruz, Arizona.
The stove.
Wow, he lucked out.
He didn't use it for Santa Cruz, you know.
Yes, slugs are up in that Santa Cruz, California. All right, I think the next policy, three one oh seven, is your fiscal accounting and financial reporting. So these are the obligations that you have every year to publish your annual financial report and the preparation of those reports. And this is the procedure that governs that. Again, the procedure that governs your annual financial report, if you scroll down, this is pretty specific. You have to publish notice of this, these are the things that your business office takes care of on your behalf. And this procedure is governing the transfer of accounting responsibilities. So I don't believe that you are, that you're not, so that you have the ability to take over your own accounting responsibilities. You work through your county, which is what most school districts do. And then this is the calculation of average daily membership, which you all are aware of, this is your forty. Instructional time models, we kept this because, I asked this question of your administration, whether you currently teach through a blended version. You have in the past, I believe, it's Mr. Verdugo, so you've got this as a may that you can adopt an instructional time model. This is something that was born out of COVID, right? And so you've got the option to do this, but you don't have to. Policy three one oh eight, you govern your audits, you're required, under state law, to have an independent accounting firm audit your business and your office. So that's what this policy. And this is the procedure that relates to audit requirements, this is generated from the Uniform System of Financial Records. One oh nine governs your procurement. So this is the policy that talks about your governing board, your purposes, governing public inspection of records, conflict of interest requirements, again, all these things are varied. This is, to what your point that we were asking about before, about when could you accept a gift without having it be a pre-paid one? Right here, you can take t-shirts, mugs and pens, that's about it. So, there you go, that's what your state legislature is defined. So this, this, I used to be able to grant my law firm would have boxes to the Diamondback games. That statute was amended and I couldn't, any, to any superintendent anymore, so that may be sad. But this is, talks about purchases from employees and this is compliant with state law as well. And then this is the procedure that governs procurement compliance. So this is going to be about getting quotations, when you have to do seal this, you're better than purchasing. All this finely tuned mechanics of the Arizona. Our state regulations, the Arizona Administrative Code. And then the USFRs, so again, you know, requirements about when you're purchasing something and it's going to go over a number of years, such as software. This procedure is simply to govern what mandatory contract provisions have to be in any contract that you have with a vendor. And then this is when you don't have to procure, so you don't have to procure, for instance, when you're looking at special education or when you're looking at creating an integral mental agreement that will reverse certain types of insurance. So that lists out those things. And then this procedure, I understand you all have been finishing on the bond project, regulations, that's a big thing. So this governs your construction. And this is, you know, by no means the be all end all of what procedures you have to follow in construction. But this just points to what, where those requirements exist. Three one two oh one governs your facilities, talks about your sale and lease of facilities and your construction and maintenance, meaning the minimum adequacy standards, which, as you know, this is all governed by the School Facilities Board, which has a new name, SFOB, School Facilities Off, what is it, Ms. Brown? Facilities Office Board, I think maybe, anyway, they just changed their name, so it does refer to the correct. Oversight, thank you, office, not office, oversight, thank you. And then if you have to close a school, God forbid, if you have to go through the process of closing one of your campuses that's governed by statute, and so this would talk about how you would do that. And then this is the procedures for opening or closing a school. Again, this is dictated by state law, you have to have a certain number of public meetings, it has to be a certain amount of time that you give people notice so that your community can come and, you know, give their opinions about whether you close this school or that school, as a board, you're required to hear that. And so this governs that, those requirements. This procedure addresses outside business operations. When we were creating the policies, there were some concerns about, you know, we don't want to have entities on your campus that are competing with services that you provide if you don't want them to be there. So, for instance, a competitive food vendor, or if you have an organization that is coming onto your campus, sometimes there are difficulties with our special needs children, where parents will want their providers to come onto your campuses and provide services during the school day. So we wanted to give the boards full control and authority over the properties that you manage. And so that's what this procedure is about. And then three two oh two governs your facility use, so short term facility use, your ability to lease property. And then the procedure that is in regards to this is pretty lengthy. And this is something that when you do the deep dive, you're going to want to make sure that the procedure complies with what you do already. But this is about how, I don't know if Santa Cruz Valley leases out its facilities to members of the community. So for instance, sometimes churches will use school buildings or you'll have arrangements with athletics teams and that sort of thing. You lease your fields, ball fields, so this would govern that. This is the short term facility use procedure that would govern charging of fees for your, your community to use your fields or your buildings and how much you're going to charge if you let, you know, for instance, your parent communities are going to be able to use your facilities uncompensated under this policy. So that's what this is about. And then the requirements for that, that they have to have insurance, that sort of thing. The requirements related to the hosting of elections, where those monies go into the civic center school fund. So that's what this procedure is about. This procedure governs service animals and the animals in classrooms. This is different than your current existing policies, which do not have a service animal requirement. We do see this on a crazy basis in the legal community, that there are people bringing animals onto campus and saying that they are required, and so this governs that.
Could you repeat that again?
Sure, so this, this procedure governs when you are required to have a service animal on your campus.
Then on ours.
Currently, there is not a ASBA policy that I'm aware of that governs service animals. And we created a separate procedure.
It's our policy with regard to that, Mr.. We, we follow the federal guidelines, I believe is what it is.
The Department of Justice has created a federal guideline, section under IHB right now.
Yeah.
So we have people. At our school.
Yeah, it's an IHB in our current policies.
So IHB, that your current policy would refer to your obligation to comply, but it doesn't sort of list out more detail in it. This, again, this was, this piece was vetted by this law as well. Three two oh three is visitors, this is currently under your section K. When, you know, that there's new state law that talks about you having to provide access to parents to visit a potential classroom if they are choosing to enroll or want to look to enroll. So this would require that compliance and then we also put how the public has to act when they're on your campuses. And so this procedure is specific to prohibit disruption on your campuses so that your school activities can continue without malicious people threatening anybody on your campuses on their south. So very specific.
So the people that bring dogs to our school have to have, they have to be service dogs?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct, okay, I just want to be sure about that, because I know we've had people bring them in. You know, there's always the flip side, is one of these dogs bites somebody, then we're, you have issues there with liability there as well on the flip side.
You certainly do. The, the procedure that governs the service animals addresses that they have to, they, both federal law and state requirements require that whoever brings the animal on the campus have the ability to handle that animal. So they are designated handlers and so that is addressed in the procedure.
Good, thank you, very interesting.
Okay, and so this, again, now we're moving on to the procedure about what, defining what interference with the national institution is and then prohibiting that interference. And so this, this would address Mr. Pundit. Three three oh three, now we're moving on, so we're finished with, we did the business office, then we did facilities. Now we're going to do food and transportation. And then the last part of chapter three is security controls. So food services, very regulated, how you provide your nutrition to students. And we talked a little bit about competitive outside vendors. This is, again, very structured and governed by federal law. So this is your policy that would make you, you know, you have a wellness program that's required by federal law. So this is all, all related to your food provision of nutrition to your, to your children. And then this is a procedure about the nutrition, again, this very, very established and dictated under federal law. Federal regulations, free and reduced lunch program, what you're required to do with respect to that program that you have to operate under federal law, how you get the information to your parents, that's what this procedure is about. And that's what is in the food services. Next one is your cafeteria standards, what you're required to do in terms of maintaining your food program and your cafeterias. This is about charging for meals, when you can charge. And this is about your wellness program, which again is dictated, that seven CFR, that refers to a federal regulation. Or you should have a written plan for wellness. And to inform the public. And now we've talked about food services, now we're going to go into transportation, again, a heavily regulated area, right? What your bus drivers have to do, what you're, you know, down to what, what operational equipment has to be on your buses. Gives you authority to contract out for transportation if you need to do that. There is a specific, talks about your school bus drivers and your school vehicles. And then this is the transportation regulation that governs providing route data to ADE and calculating it, your vehicle inventory and what you can do in terms of your funding for the grants. This procedure is all about what you have to have on your school bus, the insurance, the school bus requirements. And again, every, you know, the school bus requirements dictate down to how big the letters can be on the advertising. That's not in your procedures, but it refers to what your administration has to comply with to be able to be compliant, so. And then this is requirements related to your school bus drivers and the operations. And so this section was vetted not just by the attorneys, but also by the trust, has a transportation specialist and she has reviewed these items as well. Okay, and then the last area of the chapter three is the safety and emergency management systems for the district. So this is, this is where a lot of odd issues that were raised in other policies and your existing policies are combined. So, for instance, the occupational safety and health, that a lot of those were in your existing policies in section G regarding your employees. And we've moved them to this section so that it's very clear that these things are to protect our students and to protect our employees. And so this is also the emergency plan requirements right here in this procedure, three four oh one. The reporting of injuries, so if you have a occupational injury, this is your worker's comp requirement. That you, all injuries are reported, that state law requires them to be reported immediately, definitely within seven days. The employees have an obligation to report, so this is where that's located. This is the statute that required, the provisions that require you, if you're working in a lab, to wear eye protective gear. So that's more along the lines of safety and emergency protocol. Property safeguards, making sure that you've got surveillance cameras and anything up there with regard to protecting your property. And then we've got your pesticide application process, which is, you know, you're required to inform your families. And your community notifications, this is actually your sex offender. Again, related to protecting your community. And then we've got your records requirements, which are in this section. So this is the records obligations that you have, again, this is kind of the operational side of the house. So you might not necessarily fall in your district under your business office, but you're responsible for record keeping and making sure that you're complying with not destroying records too early. That's where these provisions are found. And your obligation to disclose public records is located in state law in these policies and procedures here. The records retention. Records retention is, again, governed by the Arizona State Library of Archives and Records. And so there's specific schedules that apply to how long you have to keep student records, how long you have to keep personnel records, when you can destroy them and what you, you have to give notice before you destroy student records. And so this governs that, that procedure. And then the Parents' Bill of Rights contains specific requirements that you allow parents access to records. And so that is listed here more specifically. And then the final area of the security and controls is your technology, making sure that you're adequately protecting students, child internet requirements that are a part of federal law, notifying parents regarding technology use and access. Maintain your website, we've got a separate provision or procedure here about accessibility of your technology, I think it's the next one. Yeah, so your use requirements, these are the things that you would have your staff and students fill out, not doing bad things. And what amount of management. The trust was pretty specific, they didn't want us to put a lot of detail into your preventing cyber crimes and cybersecurity risks, because that is an ever evolving field, as you might imagine. And so, again, I mentioned, this is the accessibility provision. So this is in compliance with what OCR requires with regard to you having your website be accessible to those with disabilities. And then finally, in the security controls, we've got insurance, your obligation to procure insurance and to pay more insurance. This is your liability coverage insurance, which you obtain through the Arizona Risk Retention Trust. And this is your workers' comp insurance, and my guess is you're with the Alliance, probably with the Alliance, but this is your workers' compensation insurance provision. And then this is government insurance benefits, what you provide is benefit of employment to your staff regarding health, visibility, intel, whatever insurance issue you provide, this gives you that authority to do that. And then the chapter three also covers elections. So we've got your minimum electoral election, authority to call for those elections, authority to call for the bond and capital of the war elections. Procedure regarding the oral and the pamphlet, which, you know, again, is dictated by state law. Procedure for the bond election ballot pamphlet, again, governed by state law. And then you're obligated, as you are going through bond projects, I'm sure you're used to this, you're obligated to those reports that come to the board to tell you, this is how we're spending the money that our constituents approved for our use. And so this policy, three five oh two, governs your requirements regarding that record keeping. And so this policy, three, five oh two, governs your, uh, requirements regarding that record keeping and that reporting out. And then this policy, three, five oh three, you'll remember when you have elections and you all, as board members, have run for office, so you're used to elections. There are things that you can do and things you cannot do. You cannot use district resources to influence the outcome of an election. And this is the policy, three, five oh three, that reiterates those state law requirements, so. And then the procedure is very specific, detailed, governs, you know, for instance, your employees can have vehicles on the campus that have campaign signs on them, but they can't, um, use their time in the classroom to dictate what should or shouldn't happen as the outcome of an election. So these are some very specific, um, permitted requirements and prohibited requirements when it comes to school district elections or even national elections. And we've come to the end of chapter three.
Five minute break?
Yeah.
You all, you all are in charge, so ten breaks sounds good to me.
Ten minute break.
Yep.
The floor is all things employees. So the first policy, only the government board of the state of Arizona can hire and fire. So that's what four one oh one says. So the board is the one with the authority to employ. And I do want you to know that I worked with Leant, who I believe is Julietta, excuse me. Who I believe is online, I think I saw her today on the Zoom. And so she and I met earlier in the week. And she has done a little bit of labor for the government board and put in some procedures that are things that you already use. And we placed them under four one oh one. So if you'll go please to four one oh one A, this is your procedure regarding your salary guidance that you're already using. And your professional growth credit program is already embedded into this. Four one oh one B is your support staff incentive program that you have. Regarding when your support staff become eligible for incentives and how they enroll. And then the staff reimbursement, the district, your incentive program. These are things that Mr. Kramer does and the team has done the label for salary. This is the procedures regarding salary statements which you approve. So it's statements for special education, for your math, for your gifted stipends. And then other contract commissions and other improvement and retention stipends. And I did make a change to the, and I saw one and didn't catch. But I did make one change to those, calling them stipends rather than bonuses. It's been your board's prerogative to call those bonuses in the past. And it would be my recommendation that you change to use the word stipend. It is more industry standard and it's also, there is a lot of attorney general opinions that govern and dictate that you can't provide mid-year bonuses. And bonuses in excess of gift of public funds. And so I did use my discretion to change that language.
A bonus is stipend.
And so instead of bonus using stipend, yeah, would be my recommendation. And that's how I, one change that I suggested to your procedures. But I did catch one place where we forgot to legitimize bonus, retention bonus. I will make those changes to, to call them stipends. Okay, four, four one oh two is your staff assignments. So this is the provisions that allow the superintendent to make transfers. And just discuss specifically the approval of work calendars for each of your employee groups. And then again, Juliana and I worked together to put in procedures that you're already using. So the employment of temporary personnel is in here as well as staff assignments, the next policy or procedure. This is four one oh three. So this is a new policy about employee evaluations. And one of the things I think I mentioned was that in your existing policies, you have an employee evaluation policy for your professional staff and an employee evaluation policy for your classmate staff. And they're combined into this. So this goes through every one of your employee groups. How you evaluate certificate administrators, how you evaluate teachers. And of course, the teachers is very specified in state law. The district has put in its own definition of an adequate classroom performance right here. So in this area, you, under state law, are required to define how you review an adequate based on your instructional observations from a different one that's already specialized for San Cruz in the policies that will be proposed to you. These things are very specified under state law, the giving of a preliminary notice to a certified teacher. So that's where I'm concerned. And then the confidentiality provisions with respect to evaluations, when a teacher can appeal them. And so then this lower part of the policy is how you evaluate non-certificated administrators and other support staff employees. Four one oh four is discipline. And this governs how you're going to execute minor discipline, which in state law is defined from anything to a red reprimand up to 10 days of suspension without pay. This is for employees, not for teachers or not for students. And so this is the procedures that you're going to follow if you're going to do anything less than basically terminated. These are the procedures that will be followed by your district administration.
Yeah, I just want to say that Mr. Kramer again had mentioned something about our attorney talking about closing the barn door to make sure we don't have those problems with, we aren't going to discuss that yet. Okay, thank you.
There's a procedure that says that if you don't have a certificate, it's not covered in your policy statute. Four one oh five is about how you terminate employees. Again, for certificate employees, you're going to do it how state law tells you to do it. For your support staff, at-will, non-certificated employees, it governs giving them the due process procedures that you would give if you're, and they're different depending on if somebody has contract unemployment for a year or if they are an at-will employee. Which means that you can terminate them with or without cause with 10 days' notice. Four one oh six, and the unlikely that you all have to do reduction of force, this procedure would apply. Four one oh seven just governs personnel records. So what is in a personnel record, how somebody would amend it, that's governed. This is a new policy for your school district that we've added. Four one oh eight is a model policy. This is a procedure governing the encouragement of professional growth of your employees. And then you've got, I believe, a procedure attached to requirements for participation in the professional development program that you all have already established. So again, we've tried to, where we could customize this already for San Cruz Valley. Four two oh one, so, and you might remember in your existing policy manual, you have a policy on staff ethics. You have a policy on staff conduct. You have specific requirements regarding to how your staff has to interact with students. In our review, we tried to combine those and make a really specific code of conduct. And it's got things that, it's got some thou shalls and thou shall nots. And so these are the thou shalls. Employees are going to dress appropriately. They're going to only perform district work during district time. They're going to complete their job duties with integrity, honor all contractual commitments. So these, this is, the first part of this policy is, this is what we expect from our staff. And the second part, these are the things that our employees cannot do. You know, and some of them are obvious, sexual advances, hurt a child, engage in conduct with the intent to embarrass the child. And so these are what we would expect that our employees would not exhibit on our campuses. Some of these are dictated by state law and some of them are just a part of good governance for your employees. And if you would scroll back.
Jenny, can you go back up and go through each of the items? Because this is, Mr. Mieres was talking about, Mr. Kramer had requested to make sure that we review this to have as far as any of those issues. So if you would like to make sure we review that. Yes.
So, so these are, these are the expectations, starting with this section. The expectations of what you would expect your employees to do of your professional boundaries. And we have a whole separate policy on professional boundaries that we'll get to. But all of, all of these items that are up there. It was our effort to make this student-centered. It's pretty straightforward. It is. We tried to be concrete, to make your job easier, right? If you have to counsel an employee that they're not doing the right way, you need to be able to point to the policy. Can't do that, here it says, and it's one place for that. Again, these are, these are still in the, employees have to follow all workplace controls to prevent injuries. They have to get to work on time. Superintendent said to me this week, I gotta keep that in. She said at my school district, it's National Do Your Job Day every day. And she said, and I have National Get Your Own Body to Work. Code, I, we have, I do believe that San Cruz Valley has a specific dress code for staff and that we've included that as a procedure. I think we'll get to that. Again, this section to Superintendent Verdugo's point, these are things that employees shall not do. And again, some of these are criminal on teacher, right? And some of them are specified as to things that you would want to do to protect students.
I think the one that Mr. Kramer was referring to is where it says the district is not required to provide certificate teachers opportunity to overcome, wasn't in that particular case, but overcome when teachers or remediate unprofessional conduct prior to initiating discipline or dismissal, misaction. Nor is the district required to provide any employee with remediation opportunities for conduct that otherwise constitutes unprofessional conduct.
So that's kind of.
And dicting violation of law or district policies because we had a situation in which our attorney told us that you need to close that barn door so you never have that situation again.
And what I suspect that what we're, what you're talking about there is going to be in the pre-policy that we just reviewed about evaluations. And so I will connect with Ms. Lowry on that issue. But what, what she's talking about is that if you are using your evaluation policies to correct unprofessional conduct, then you are potentially having to give that teacher or a staff member the opportunity to correct their behavior in an improvement plan. But if their behavior is really about not following the policy or law, you don't want to give them time to improve. As I always say, you don't want to give someone who's a jerk time to decide not to be a jerk, right? If they're a jerk, you want to move them and correct that action without having to go through that. So I believe that's what she's talking about.
Just that, yeah, there was too much gray area with regard to.
There, there are in some areas, so, but, you know, we, I will double check to make sure with Ms. Lowry that I understand exactly Mr. Kramer's point and yours to make sure that you are not required to put in an employee's evaluation what you should be, what the district administration should be doing through corrective actions. And the policies do specify that, but the language you wrote, I'll make sure, is a part of your evaluation.
Bringing up with Mr. Kramer, but I think I sent that to you, but he.
I mean, I'll follow up on that point and maybe, you know.
Thank you.
Okay, and so then these are, these, again, this section of policy is what you are not permitted to do as a staff member. And again, some of these are criminal, right? Can't bring weapons. Can't use your, your position for improper purpose. That's, I think that's in our Title 15. And then I mentioned to you that I believed that you had a procedure on dress code. And then this is already again embedded through the proposed procedures. This is, this procedure about staff dress is what you are doing currently. And frankly, I loved it. So I might be, might be proposing this to other school districts, so really good work on that. This is a, a new policy, not a new idea, but a new, new direct policy on staff-student boundaries. So.
You were talking about, by the way, having a dress code for our, our special staff.
That what we looked at, if you want to go back, we can look at it again.
No, no, I'm good. I just want to be very clear about it.
You have a very clear, that's what I loved about it. It's very clear what your staff can and cannot wear. And I, I thought this was very particularly well-written and detailed. All right. So we'll move on to staff-student boundaries. So this, this policy was created and written by the attorneys who have to defend educator sexual misconduct, which is, the two areas of highest risk for the West are cybersecurity claims and educator sexual misconduct. God forbid that ever happened. But this is meant to be very specific about what staff members are and are not permitted to do with respect to learning and your care, custody, and control over debt. And so they may not engage in these behaviors and you can't discipline them. And then this procedure, the Arizona State Board of Education came out with best practices for use of social media. And so this incorporates that. In the training that we just went to through the trust, you know, we would encourage the school district to flesh this out, to tell staff, you may communicate with students on Class Dojo or where your vehicle is, but you tell them how you want, you, you want them to communicate with students and staff. If you give students email addresses, you may communicate by email, you may communicate by Class Dojo, but we do not want you to have personal cell phones of your students on your phone, that sort of thing. So you're real specific about it. This is again dictated, this student supervision policy is reiterated here. It's also in the staff code of conduct, but reiterated that they want staff to have a learned sight on students. While this is paid. Four two oh four is your mandatory reporting obligations. So this is reporting on child abuse and then reporting of crimes. Again, dictated by state law. And this is just a procedure to help with how your staff should make those reports. And dictated by state law. And another procedure related to the reporting of crimes. Again, state law, these, you know, if any of these crimes are current, you have the obligation to report. This is, four two oh five is the drug, alcohol, and alcohol-free workplace requirements. Again, dictated by both federal and state law. And the prohibition of tobacco use on your campuses. And then for, the four three hundred series governs employee health and welfare. So communicable diseases and immunizations is in four three oh one. And then a procedure related to your reform requirements for communicable diseases. And records of immunizations that you have to keep. And then four three oh two is your leave policies. Juliana and I worked on these. These are already customized for San Cruz Valley. So we have you all use, for instance, you have personal leave, you don't have sick leave. But your personal leave is sufficient to cover your obligation to provide your employees with earned paid sick time, except for those who are temporary workers, in which case they earn paid sick time.
Thank you.
So Juliana and I worked very closely on those to make sure that they are compliant. But this is an area that I will highlight for the people to make sure that Ms. Lowry gives this a once-over-two. Ms. Brown indicated to me, you know, one of her worries earlier in that day was that she wants to make sure that your staff doesn't lose anything when you adopt these policies. And this was the one area that we really mentioned too earlier in the week. So this is your procedure on HEPA and L.A. leave. And it's lengthy and with a couple of requirements for HEPA. Procedure on earned paid sick time, this is only going to apply. You all have, what, state law, when they came, this was Prop two oh six leave. So when Prop two oh six leave was enacted, it said that you had to give one hour for every 30 hours work to everyone. And the people that fell through for school districts typically were substitute teachers or temporary workers. And so this would apply to those individuals who were on a certain paid sick time. Everybody else has sufficient professional leave that is governed to them as a contracted employee in the district or an employee who's on a typical full-time FTE work calendar. You have sufficient leave to cover your requirements for earned paid sick time. This is the policy that governs your pers, your personal leave. And again, it's, it talks specifically about how employees accrue that personal leave. And that is, was reiterated in policy four three oh two. This is military leave prescribed by statutes, U.S.E.R.R.A. I know that's a statute. And then bereavement leave, this was tailored to, to meet your current expectations for giving a bereavement leave. And then you all have a sick leave bank. And so this procedure governs your obligations with regard to a sick leave bank. And this policy just says, we, if you want to have, file a complaint of discrimination, we refer you to the other policies. So now we're going to, the last section of chapter four is about protections for your employees. This is an employee grievance policy. This is one where you might want to take a deeper look and make sure that this means what you're, what you want to have is employee grievance policy, but it matches pretty much what you do now. And then this is a specific policy that governs whistleblower protection. So if you have an employee that makes a complaint that, about a matter of public concern to your governing board that alleges that someone committed a crime or, or misuse public funds, the law says that you can't retaliate against that individual. So this governs that. Very rarely used, but this is a more specific policy than what you have existed. And this is a more specific procedure to govern that as well. If somebody does make a workplace complaint about this issue, these are the things that are prohibited for you to do in terms of retaliating against that employee. And then this final policy, four four oh four, is a policy that talks about how you meet your requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So then you meet your requirements to provide reasonable accommodations to your employees and how they would go about feeding that. Now we're on to chapter five. So do we want to take a break or kind of roll?
I got my coffee, so I'm good.
All right. We're at 11 o'clock. This is, you know, gear up. This is the medias portion of our, of our policy manual proposed. This is the student section.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something about the pre-section before we move on.
Absolutely.
So I think it would do as well to remind our staff about student boundaries with regard to social media. We had a situation where people broke governing board policy, totally in violation of that. Also, I was looking at four dash two oh two with regard to student-staff boundaries. I think that talking to them about number eight is important. Just a moment. Have to scroll to. Your like language and behavior, I saw that too. Totally uncalled for. So I think it would do as well, serve as well to remind our staff of that at the beginning of the year. Maybe even before then. Thank you.
Chapter five. So the first part of chapter five talks about some of the basics with regard to enrollment and attendance boundaries and that sort of thing. So the very first chapter is about the establishment of attendance boundaries. And then a regulation that governs your attendance boundaries. And next policy is about enrollment requirements. These are the things that you all used to where, you know, if you have a resident, they have to produce, they have to produce something that shows their resident of your district. And so this is what the requirements are with regard to enrollment, entrance age. They have to prove the age of the child. And then the regulation, the proceed, yeah, the, excuse me, the procedure is where the nitty-gritty of this comes in. So these are, some of these things are dictated by state law, proving proof of residency, attendance ages, you know, that you would have to accept a kindergarten student younger than five specifically. And so, and what you have to maintain, like this section of the policy that's been helpful right now in the procedure governs what types of specific documents you can accept to show that somebody's a resident. That's for students, that's governed under this provision and the payment for students who, coming into your district who are not residents. And then this is a procedure, draft procedure about vision screening for new enrollees in your district. And this policy is about your truancy, compulsory attendance, and when someone could be excused. So for instance, that you can excuse for religious instruction. And what you were required to do to notify parents of their student's attendance. This policy five, one oh four is for students with chronic health problems. This is dictated by state law. If they, if they submit very specific information from a physician, they're excused from your student attendance and you have a different obligation in terms of how you educate them. And so this policy and this procedure governs how you would take care of those students in your board, in your boundaries who are chronically ill. Five, one oh five is your open enrollment policy. So this is compliant with state law, governs how you would accept open enrollment of other students, who you would give priority to as required by state law. And, and then gives you some options for priority if you want to change those options after the statutorily required priorities are met. And then the process for open enrollment is in the procedure five A. And the process for your five one oh six governs your homeschooled students. So participation in student athletic programs. Five two oh one is a, is a policy that talks about certain, but not all, requirements under state law, but having the flag displayed, the U.S. Constitution, the Bill of Rights, moment of silence, which you're required to have at the beginning of every school day, Declaration of Independence. There are some things that are not covered in five two oh one. Other school districts have chosen to cover, so the obligation to teach about Santa Day of Connor, two nine eleven. So if you want, if you all are interested in that, if you want, Melissa, if you want to email me on that issue, I can show you what other school districts are proposing to do if you want to have those things set. Five two oh two is your section on, we're now getting into curriculum and instruction new sections on compliance with your responsibilities under section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act, which is your responsibilities to accommodate students with disabilities. And then the next policy is going to be about your responsibility under. And then the next policy is going to be about your responsibility under IDEA. So this is the procedure that governs your responsibilities under five oh four. So as you know, in your district, if you have a student with disability. Accommodation plan for that student. And so this, you have to evaluate that student, you have to have a team, you have to create a five oh four plan. And so that's what this procedure is about, those obligations. And then similarly, under the IDEA, if you have a student that's found eligible for special education services. You know, and I know, and some of you are teachers who worked here forever, so you know that their obligations to them are very specified in federal law, right? Down from who can be on that I U P team to all of the screening procedures, your child mind obligations. What happens if the parents disagree with the proposed placement? So this policy is very lengthy. And it was written by Heather Pearson, if you've ever worked with Heather, she works with Denise Lilbrand. She wrote this policy, Denise benefited. You know, they are the special compliance experts in the state of Arizona, so that's where this policy lies. There you go, there's the end. Right, so it's, I don't, twenty pages long, it's long. So, um, procedure is similarly long and involved, but um, there are many. So this governs your obligation to provide an independent educational evaluation to a um, parent. Um, and how you would go on doing that. This is the one about priority notice. So these are concepts um, for you all, if you, if you have the background in education that you're very familiar with, again, very specific. Um, this, this, I mentioned the vetting process, so this has been vetted by special education directors. Who have existed in the valley for a long time and made sure that we hit everything with regard to these very complicated issues. Five two oh five governs the provision of gifted education. This is another concept that's governed in your state law. Um, says what gifted education is and talks about your uh, gifted programs. And then there's a procedure that goes along with that, where this is highlighted, this is where your district will personalize. So for when you get to um, your next round of review, these will be filled in. But you, five two oh six, um, your English instruction. Daughter come up and teach us about this, to teach us the building program, this is what this is about, is to teach other English learners. As defined by state law. So five two oh six, the procedure is uh, the procedure that governs the teaching of your English. Again, very dictated under state and federal law. And this is an area that your um, school administration will review to fit in. To make sure that um, it means San Cruz Valley's needs. Curriculum adoption. So um, this is the process that you all, this again is dictated by state law. But the process that you all use when you adopt curriculum. So as you may know, you have to have that curriculum available to parents for sixty days. Um, and it um, can have um, a specific process that uh, includes, but. Parents reviewing. You kick the vendors. So this is your curriculum adoption policy. Also, this is the policy that contains the requirement that the. As a board committee chooses your curriculum, the board committee has to comply with open reading law. So um, that is an area that's been um, sort of a push point for school districts, because that's um, that was an area that was not addressed. Until recently in your current policy governance, and so it was missed. So we made sure we had it in here so that you don't get dinged on that. And then five two oh eight, this governs your availability and access to instructional materials. It includes the new, relatively new requirements regarding sexually explicit material not being taught without getting express parental permission. And so that's what that policy is about. And this again is how you're going to provide access to instructional materials for your. Two oh nine is your library, school library, media and parental and resource centers. So the requirement, there's new statutory requirements that you make available to parents so that they can see what their students have checked out. And so that's embedded within the policies and procedures here. Five two ten is special interest materials. So this is, um, you know, if you have any supplemental materials or special interest materials. Governance how that your staff can't participate in um, in a sectarian manner, can't teach religion in schools, basically is what this is saying. Five two eleven is your class size policy. Um, and so the district will be in the process when you put, when you come back for your adoption. Um, there will be a procedure that governs class sizes that's specific to San Cruz Valley. It's really important that the board sets that up for open enrollment parameters so that you maintaining um, education for your district residents and that not overextending your staff. So this is, again, this is the procedure. This, this is the district's existing procedure on your student staff ratios. Five two one two is your student clubs and activities. Um, this is the area in which you would um, authorize students' clubs and student activities to occur. And then the procedure is more specific about student groups. Is these concepts that if you scroll, if you go down a little bit, Shannon, please back up to the top of this procedure. So these are odd terms, uh, co-curricular student group, non-curricular student group, non-instructional time, non-school presentation. Very, this is a detailed procedure because this, these are definitions that you're not used to using, but that you know by other words. Um, but this is what the um, what the statute requires. And essentially what this means is that you as a school district board can offer, if you chose to limit your student clubs to only academics. You could do that. But you generally don't. You generally allow both an academic or um, club or a non-curricular student group. Which means that it doesn't directly tie to the state standards. So uh, for instance, Mr. Ramirez coached the chess club, I understand, and uh, brought them to state many times. I got to hear about that a little bit this morning, which I really enjoyed. Um, but that might not be considered directly, even though there are so many educational benefits attached to chess club. You don't need a chess club to be able to go to school. So you all, and I'll like to hit.
It was the team, so it was covered under A I A.
Team activity. I love that. Um, so that's what, that's why this procedure is pretty defined, um, is to allow you to accommodate for both.
We tried to be a club whenever we wanted to get that Winnebago, you know, to be able to transport kids, but. They never allowed it. Tried.
This is the procedure that deals with student activities funds. This is also dictated by state law, what, what you can and cannot use in the student activity funds, who controls them. Um, so, and then these are the district sponsored activities, which. Includes this term academic contest. I'm unfamiliar with forming adopted policy requirements through the draft. Um, so learn a little bit about that. And then this is again, a procedure that relates to district sponsored activities, um, some of these same concepts that we talked about before. Or your interscholastic activities, what you permit and don't permit. And then the concept of this academic um, contest um, is a part of state law. All right, moving on to five two one four. This is your course activity and program fees. As you know, under state law, you have to provide a free education to all of your residents. But there are certain areas in which you can charge participation fees. My lifetime as a lawyer, so when I first started, I was trying to think how you can, but you have to do certain things when you charge. Including you have to give your principals the option of providing an exception for those who really can't afford it. This policy governs that fee waiver. If you scroll down a little bit, Shannon. Um, that's the fee waiver that I just talked about, says that your principal can waive the fee if your, if your students can't afford it. And that you're not going to be charged, any, any student's not going to be charged for the use of the. That's prescribed by state law. Um, so now we're getting into five two one six, more curriculum and instruction. This is about promotion and retention, passing grades. And then this procedure is governed. And then additional procedures that will be filled in right here about uh, new procedures for graduation requirements. These have to be specific to San Cruz Valley. And so when you work in there at these on June twenty seventh, this information will be built in. So that it is specific to San Cruz Valley. Um, this is your sex education policy, um, compliant with state law, if you're currently teaching um, or all the curriculum uh, in your schools. This is what's required. And um, this is, here's an online instruction, are you all operating in A O I, so you're operating in A O I, so you will have to have this type of policy. And again, this Lilbrand wrote that it's compliant with the A O I requirements. Five three oh one is the student's first amendment right policy. Um, and it recognizes that, uh, as the Tinker case says. Uh, you know, students do not abandon their first amendment rights when they walk from the schoolhouse gates. And so this policy just recognizes that and says that you don't discriminate against that student experiment. However, you are permitted, as you know, as a school district to regulate student speech within the context of your programs. And your presentations. And so this policy seeks to um, to find that balance about when you can regulate student speech and when you can't. Five three oh two, student records, this is your FERPA, due for family education rights and privacy act. So this governs your annual notification for students, governs your ability to um, allow parents to inspect the student records. And so that's, um, you have both a policy on this and a pretty detailed procedure on. You know.
Move back to five three oh two.
Five to five three oh two.
The, the student dress code is in there, and I believe, yeah, that's one that you guys wanted to review.
Yeah.
Current with the policies.
One's still up.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Five three oh two is the student attire policy. And I believe that this is our proposed model and not, has not been. Has not been. So um, if you all have an existing dress code that applies to student attire.
Expresses a midriff.
No procedure.
Just come turn this scroll back.
Yeah, I think they wanted to review, we wanted to review.
By the way, everything is on May first. If you ever want to look, get your electronic copy on your computer, Ms. Vasquez was telling me, we're trying to find it. It's on May first.
May first. Mr. Verdugo sent it to us on May first.
I apologize to Angie, by the way. I didn't mean to give you a heart attack to make all those copies. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, so I, what I mean by this, I'm from the district administration and the board is that the student attire policy is one that you want to maybe look at in person. So you have.
For instance, here it says significantly interferes with the district's ability to maintain order. That's really, really vague, you know?
But then look at the under, it says that students should not show their midriff, like expresses.
I mean, I'm just talking about that particular one. Probably needs to be rewritten to be more specific. Just, it's too.
So again, um, you know, this is a model. There is no requirement under state law that you have a student dress code. Um, but we have created a, a model for you to consider. Um, and we certainly can work with your council to make sure that this is personalized for you all. If you don't feel ready to tackle this on June twenty seven, then this may be a policy that you will admit and take at a later date.
Yeah.
Um, so.
I was just laughing, I was looking at one here. Just kind of those. Where it says promoter depicts unlawful use of alcohol, tobacco and drugs. Once I was hauled out of my classroom, ran down to go. To go pick up my daughter because she had violated the dress code. And she was wearing a shirt that said B E R L I N. Somebody thought she was advertising. So I'll leave my room and go down there. True story.
There you go, B E R L I N. Famous city capital.
Can't believe this, really shell shocked. Oh wow, things happen.
So, so what I'd request is that, because we do, we'll adopt on the twenty seventh, is if there's recommendations that the board would like to share with us that we can then discuss on the twenty.
Appreciate that, Mr. Verdugo.
Very, very much.
Share the tired work, because it's a lot of stuff.
So, so what I would just suggest is that, um, now you see the, the model, then just, then send it, take notes and then send us the, what you would like to see in there.
Yep.
Just looking at this, uh, no other schools, uh, they have it where the, the skirt goes right above the knees. I don't see that up there.
Um, I don't believe that it's in there. I do know that other districts, it talks about exposing the wearers midriff undergarments or undergarment areas. But not the length of skirts or shorts. So you certainly can add that.
Like I was telling you earlier, we live in a very traditional community and they expect this kind of thing.
So you may want to look at Queen Creek, on the trust website, um, if you want to take a look at that at some point. You can see how the two school districts that have already adopted, how those model policies, how the model policies look. And then how the two that have already clarified, and Queen Creek is also a very conservative community, and they do have a more conservative dress code than what is listed here. But I'm going to give, I'm going to make sure I make a note.
I don't know that it's necessarily conservative or liberal, whatever, it's just a dress code. And I think because our, I mean, our counties are very liberal. When you look at how they vote, I think whether they're liberal or they're conservative, they're still very traditional. And that's the better word here, because they all expect whether they're conservative, well, not all, but the majority, whether they're liberal or they're. They're conservative, they still expect the dress code to be enforced. I don't have any problems saying it publicly. I do too, and I expect the rules to be enforced.
I think you're referring to Queen Creek, being very.
Point taken. Conservative is the wrong word. Uh, what I am trying to say is that they are, um, they are, in terms of their student participation. They want to maintain a traditional, um.
And we have differences right here in our board politically, but we, I would imagine that we all, I can't speak for everybody, but I would imagine. It's pretty safe to say that we all believe in the dress code.
And I did, I certainly did not mean, I was not talking Republican versus.
I know, I understand.
Whether, whether they uh, enforce a more traditional dress.
I got you.
Um, but I'm, I've made a note to make sure that I tell uh, Ms. Lilbrand that this is an area that might need additional counsel on. Um, and to make sure that, that this policy is one that she takes a look at once uh, Mr. Verdugo receives the board's recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Verdugo, because it really shows your patience and.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we talked a little bit about this policy being compliant with FERPA. Uh, the next page on it runs through the requirements regarding the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, the definitions of records. And then very detailed procedure about the annual notification requirements under the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. And then direct, the definition of what directory information is, this is the concept that you can give out certain pieces of information without getting specific parent approval. Um, and so that's listed and you can define what is directory information. And then parent does, does agree with records and their students, how you would amend the records, and this is a procedure that's compliant with the law. All right, um, moving on from student records, five three oh four is staff interviews of students and searches. So this governs the fourth amendment responsibilities that your staff have to not conduct an unreasonable search of a child. Um, you do have different standards than, you don't need probable cause to search a child, you need a reasonable suspicion that they're violating district policy. Um, but your, um, this, the extent of the search has to be reasonable. So these are areas that are really dictated by both the constitution of the state and federal, and by case law interpreting what is or is not a reasonable search. And so this policy um, tries to define those items. Five three oh five is your student code of conduct. Um, this is a policy, again, that Denise Lilbrand wrote, very well written, very definitive. Similar to your staff code of conduct, this is what we require our students to do. And so it's listed, specific. Um, you could have, if you want, if you have a student code of conduct that's in your handbook. You could have, if you want, if you have a student code of conduct that's in your handbook, you want to attach that as an exhibit, you could do so at a later time. This should cover everything.
I want to say two things, thank you, Dr. London, for bringing us back to that, I appreciate it. And the other one I wanted to, I just want to say something before I forget, it had to do with. Had to do with First Amendment and kids walking in, you were saying, you know, those amendments still exist after they pass the gates into the school. Certain things can be curbed, like for instance, kid writing something on a bathroom wall with a marker that turns our whole community upside down. I wrote about this recently to a paper. And I'm very concerned about that because I don't want the kids arresting the control from the adults with regard to safety. And they have sort of done this and we had a series of these things. It's nice that it kind of stopped, but I'm still concerned. So a kid writes something on a wall, you know, with regard to. Threat. That's kind of like going into theater and yelling fire, right?
So thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for that question. The the policy on student free speech is not going to override your responsibility to protect each and every student on your campus. And so first of all, a threat is not protected by free speech. And so if they write something threatening or they write something disparaging as to a protected class, let's say they write something nasty that is racial in tone. That would not be protected speech under your policies because it would violate your anti policy, your anti. And it's vandalism, right? And you're not allowed to write on your walls. So so on all three counts, something along those lines, you could still be able to discipline that student. So the types of free speech that aren't permitted to be on your campus, the the famous example is in that Tinker case where they wore something that was not disruptive. They wore the long arm bands. Or if if they are wearing something that's in line with your. You know, they're wearing a cross or a star of David or a crescent moon on their neck or, and they're permitted to do that. You could require them to take that off. That would be, those would be examples.
Mr. President, I just wanted to point out that in Shannon, if you can scroll back up. Under section five three oh five, the student code of conduct, if you scroll down to around number thirty, I believe. It lists specifically areas that I know that you and the other governing board members may want to look at. In terms of cell phone use, bomb threats, chemical threats, writing messages on walls, things like that are listed numerically and.
There's something.
All right. Any other questions on those free speech issues? Okay, well, gone to student discipline, five three oh six. This is the policy that, as you know, if you you are, as a school district, you are permitted to create procedures for minor discipline. And again, minor is the same way it is under your employee statutes, suspending a student for less than ten days. You're permitted to create. And then you have provisions that are dictated by state law when you are long term suspending or selling a student. And so this is the policy that creates those procedures. This next section, if you scroll down just a little bit, Shannon, about the state law that permits a teacher to remove a child from the classroom is contained here. And then there are serious procedures, procedural due process rights that students have gained when you are suspending or selling them. This is the policy that addresses those very specifically. And you've got a very detailed, again, procedure next, that's going to govern suspension and expulsion proceedings. All right, and then we move on to five four oh one, which is police interview notification. This is also dictated under state statute, where required or permitted to call a parent when you are not. In general, this policy is going to lean into making sure that you contact your parents, your legal guardians, if the police show up on your campus, unless they basically dictate to you that you cannot. And this governs if a student is accused or suspected of a crime, what what governs. And I'm sure your staff are trained to that, they're going to ask the police if they can sit in interviews and they're going to take direction from the local authorities. And this is a five four oh two, similar policy about when it's not the law enforcement that shows up at your doors, but when it's the Department of Child Safety that shows up at your doors. Those are specific statutes that allow those personnel access to your children and dictate when you staff can or cannot. Inform parents of their presence on your campus. And what happens if they take custody of the child? Those are those two policies. Four, five four oh three is your immunization and communicable diseases policy. That this is going to govern your requirements that that students be vaccinated or have the excuse for vaccination. As well as participation in with homeschool students. And then this procedure defines them more specifically. So this is again a pretty regulated area. Arizona Department of Health Service is the one that governs dictating when your students do or don't have to approve on your campuses. Five four four is again very specific. There are certain medicines that your students are permitted to carry on campus, such as their own inhaler or their diabetic medicine. But they have to have very specific rules in place for the administration of that medicine to protect all staff. Epinephrine is another route that the students can carry with somebody, they have to, you have to follow certain hoops to be able to allow the child to have that possession. This, this is a very detailed policy and procedure that governs the administration of those medicines on your campus. Procedures for epinephrine, procedures for diabetic insulin, procedures for. Nowcom and the name of that drug is now with the one that's related to you having those. Thank you. Thank you. And then under state law, you're required to have drug and alcohol prevention instruction. And so five four oh five addresses that obligation and what that instruction is going to look like. Five four six is your policy on restraint and seclusion. So this is also governed by state law and you do have to put hands on a child to restrain them from hurting others or hurting themselves. You have specific responsibilities to create a report and to provide notification to parents. And so that's what this is. Five four seven is your anti discrimination complaint. Again, I told you, we didn't cross reference much, but this one was important enough that we thought we're going to put it in front. And then we're going to tell employees and students where to go. And so this is telling employees and students where to go. Five four oh eight is a policy that is required under state law. So you have an anti bullying policy and an anti harassment policy and the harassment, the anti hazing. And the anti hazing policy, you have to have a policy on this under state law. It has to refer to two criminal statutes that criminalize hazing behavior. And so this definitions about the sexual humiliation act of restraint, these are definitions that are governed in our criminal code. And then five four oh nine is your policy on prohibiting harassment, intimidation and bullying. And this is required by fifty three oh one, that you have a policy, that you distribute the policy, notify your parents. And if you get a bullying complaint and your principals get a bullying complaint, you're required under state law to provide notice of this policy and the forms for them to complete the complaint. Governance how you would investigate bullying. So that's what that's about. Five four oh ten is your interscholastic athletics, your A I A. So this governs your athletic contacts as well as your non curricular instructional activities that we talked about earlier. This is the policy that contains your concussion protocol required under state law. And contains, you know, all all items related to your permission of safe extracurricular activities for your students. If you want to go over that, this permission right there is under currently under litigation. So there is a state law that says, when in destiny teams, as male, female are mixed and that. So we'll see where if we have to create a revision to that policy. But if you did need to revise that policy based on that decision, that would be one of the areas in which the trust would issue it. And then this is our last policy to review today. For our fourth one is scoping referral for behavioral health services. This is governing your partnership with your community to provide those resources to students. And so this governs people going to access and to signing up for this or help your students sign up in those organizations. And then there's a procedure that is attached to this policy as well about, and these are, this is dictated by state. If you participate, it's a non shown policy, but I understand your district does participate and so we include it. Lot to emphasize. And I know it's overwhelming, again, these are all going to come back to you. And I know that Ms. Lopez will provide you, you know, with the updated versions and the staff administration will provide you with updated versions. So that you have plenty of time to review before you consider on the twenty seventh. Don't worry, we have additional changes after the twenty seventh. All you have to do is ask that a certain policy be placed on an upcoming agenda and Mr. Verdugo will do that. Because what we started and ended with today, your most important role as board members is to, is who you hire superintendent and and what you do with regard to policy.
Any questions?
Well, I actually have one with regard to three oh five, oh, five three oh five. And it had to do with forgery and plagiarism. Right now, we have quite this threat with artificial intelligence. I'd like to see something written in there with regard to that.
Okay, so you that you are a very timely question on that, Mr. Ramirez, because that is on my plate. It's to try, I've been asked not just by the trust, but also, I don't know if you all are familiar with Dr. Pal Tai. He runs the Arizona School Administrators Organization and he just asked me that this week. So there is already in your materials, in your student code of conduct, five three oh five, I think is what Mr. Ramirez said. But this is your student code of conduct and it does talk about plagiarism. Your student code of conduct forbidding students from cheating, right, on their academics. Not if you want to keep scrolling down. Thank you, forgery, plagiarism, cheating, thank you very much. So it does state that they're not going to impersonate the wrong person. I do think that that prohibition will be sufficient to cover if they are using chat G P T to create their papers. I also understand, and I haven't verified this independently, that that if a teacher thinks that something was not created by the student, they can actually ask chat G P T to say, did you create this product? I don't know if that's true, I haven't double checked that, but. A practical tool to ask the I A, and the A I itself, did you create this? So we are aware that this is a pending issue and it's on my plate to start to look at what. I'm certain that our college level, universities and community colleges are also grappling with this issue. And it's a, it's a.
You really have to stay ahead of the curve on this one because this one's really, this one's just so nautical.
I.
But it's. Something that's hard to put your finger on and integrity, intellectual, educational integrity of the district.
So I agree with you. I think that it's going to be an emergent issue. I think it's one in which we don't want to jump into creating too restrictive a policy that doesn't allow your your students to use. If there is a beneficial use of A I.
There's also, there's also the say. Sometimes you find that a kid will write something and you run it through and then it says, no, this person's work was twenty percent. A I, but it's not, it's the student's original work. So there's got to be like a percentage that you accept because you might use some words that are the same and your writing is your own, but yet. As you were saying, the computer will will recognize it, oh, well, it could be twenty percent, it was plagiarized. Do you understand what I'm talking about? Does everybody understand that?
Yeah.
That was you write your own stuff, but the computer says, hey, this is forged, this is plagiarized up to twenty percent, but that's really their own work. So we have to have, like you were saying, a way of dealing with this so that we don't punish the student as well.
I think, I think we have a number of issues, making sure that they don't plagiarize, making sure that we don't falsely accuse them of plagiarizing. And making sure that if there is an educational benefit to the use of this technology, that we don't automatically shut it out and prohibit our students from learning about it and using it. All of these things are really cutting edge issues that we will address together, you know, right? Because and it's going to as, it's going to be an ever evolving, right? Ever evolving area.
You've got our online, Mr. Ramirez, on the English papers, they're allowed to use a certain amount, fifteen percent, twenty percent without being docked.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's, I'm not sure if it's part of the policy or procedure with online.
Mr. Beach, good point. I think that in general, the policy is going to be, you can't cheat, plagiarize. It's going to be the procedures in this, each teacher's classroom as to what, for instance, they require you to cite certain sources. And you can use those sources and 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 take from them, but you need to acknowledge that you, that it's not you.
I think, I think it would serve as well to look at what's out there first before we adopt our own, before we write our own. But I'll tell you, I think it would serve as well to be very careful with the wording.
And we'll, we'll have to look at it again, similar to with all of the policies, we're going to take a deep dive into them throughout the years. It's going to take us a while, but as long as we have the the base policy, then we can adjust from there.
And as to all of your good points, this is going to be very fact specific, right? Whether what a kid, what a child did, whether that met the teacher's procedures, whether that met your district policy, whether that was an appropriate use. So it's, it's a very interesting and emerging field. When we were at the trust leadership academy this week, someone, the teens had to create. A presentation to a pretend board and they wanted our team, someone, our team tried to use chat G P T to create a mission statement and it couldn't. So, and I also heard on NPR that they tried to have chat G P T form lyrics to a well known song. And and apparently the intelligence doesn't have rhythm because they couldn't. So those are, you know, there's, there's going to be those things where you, lots of where we'll be able to see through the matrix, I hope.
You can have chat G P T, you can have chat G P T tell you, write a paper with only twenty percent. So that it's only, only reflects twenty percent.
Correct.
You can eat, that's scary.
I don't disagree. Definitely going to, you know, to, I also thought, I mean, are we going to have to go back to with the writing, you know, where you can sit and observe students when, to make sure it's their original work? You know, more of an essay learning versus creating those essays at home. I don't know how this is all going to work.
They just change a few words and then so that it's not, doesn't look like it's been plagiarized. One time I was at Caldasas and I knew that I found a, I busted a student plagiarizing, but it was really hard to prove. Because I was going through my phone trying to find where the plagiarism was until. And it took me a couple of days where I finally changed the words in such a way that it finally popped up. You know, finally, the plagiarism, but wow.
Yeah.
You know, so the kids are very clever. You know, they're like the Borg, they're constantly, you just, they're constantly adapting.
Enough of the smart kids and we have to stay on the lows, right?
I think as teachers, we know our students and how we write.
Beach, I think my. So you will have that kind of community in the world. So you will know if it comes from something that you're. You'll know that it might not be their original work.
Well, thank you, so the next steps.
Well, thank you, so the so the next steps, um we'll, all of the needed that we've even talked about today. Or possibly highlights some, um get that to the board, we'll review. Uh and then on the twenty-seventh, we will get have up for discuss. Um any questions you may have, and then we will adopt for July one. Uh and then again, throughout the year, we will look at at each of the policies reviewing, adding uh any exhibits or procedures throughout. And then sharing that with the trust to put them on, so.
So you're gonna re- resend it to us with all of the changes and additions and all of it?
Things like that, and again, anything that you have questions on, please send that to us. Uh so that I can then uh share it, review it, and then we can uh do it on the twenty-seventh. Seventh ourselves, um for instance, anything that, like the dress code, you know, if you have comments or questions that you wanna share with that. Share with, back the twenty-seventh, say this is what we are proposing, and that we're adopting, and then we'll share it.
Would you prefer that we come on the twenty-seventh with our exceptions, or that we send them to you in advance so that they can be distributed?
I would, I'd prefer advance um as much as possible, so then that way uh we have them either on the policy itself. What it would look like.
Yeah.
Uh so that we can adopt it at that time. We can always um handwrite at that time as well. Or not, but type it.
Any other questions from any of the governing board? Thank you, thank you for the presentation, it's a phenomenal job considering the amount of information. There's more.
Permit me to show a, show a brief presentation of what the, what it'll actually look like for you.
Sure.
If you have time, okay, so Shannon, if you go under the tab, this is model policy program on the, this is on the trust website. And so I mentioned to you, we've got this model policy templates, DICE arts and Queen Creek, so if you want to click on any of them. Okay, and so this is DICE arts, and you've got the chapters we just reviewed in the lab, chapter one, and if you could click on chapter one. So this will show you, and these are the policies and procedures that DICE arts adopted that we just reviewed. If you click into any of the blue, um it will pull up. And so DICE art wanted to personalize their mission statement as their very first policy, so that's what they did right there with their one one hundred. And then if you go into this box up to the right, Shannon, where it says quick, uh you have right there, type in the word boundaries, B O U N D A R I E S. And so you click that, and this pulls up every time any of the policies. Uh look at um level four boundaries, so this would govern how your attendance boundaries, govern your staff-student boundaries. And both uses of that word, very simple. I started using the trust website to do my legal research, because it's so easy to, you know, if you try to forget where something is. In the stat- statutes, I'm pulling it up, pulling up the policy, and then bumping down. Yeah, so, so when you go, if you go back out to the trust tablet, that just showed where the three were listed. Yeah, one more back, I think. Maybe if you go up to the, on the top of your, where it says the trust at the very top. Shannon, the, click out of where we are, yeah, no, no, I'm.
Yellow.
Yellow, you know, the yellow, at the uh banner.
Up on the very top.
Your top.
Up here?
No.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The tab, I'll win that, so this was when, when you all adopt, or if you adopt on the twenty-seventh. Um this is where you would be listed, um and probably be in alphabetical order, this is, would be uh where you could access. So your school website, um and it does take about two to three weeks for this vendor, which is called MicroScribe. To upload all the policies that you're gonna be adopting. But um they will go through and put your school district, and so your Santa Cruz Valley will have a link to this page. And if you, if you could, um one more, Shannon, if you could open Queen Creek for me. Um and so Queen Creek has done a little, and if you open maybe just chapter three. They, if you see here, they've got the policies, and then they've got procedures, and then they have, scroll down, they should have. Actually, let's do chapter four, I'm sorry. Um they have created the policies and procedures, keep scrolling down. And then right there, you'll see that they've got the word form, so this is what they've done in terms of uploading exhibits. So um so the policy is, has just the numerical, the procedures have A and B. And then if you wanna upload a form for your community to use, it would be uploaded and then readily available. You can click on it, it's really easy to download and create them into Word documents. It's very used, and right, and these links actually, so this one is a link to the um programming that they have for backseats. It's very, it's honestly, it's.
It's much more user-friendly.
Yeah, they have another one.
Yes, very.
Very, very pleased that the trust tried to use the policy bridge, and we were unable to get a contract with them, and it's been the best thing ever. I'm thrilled that they, it's a little bit more expensive, I think, this website, but I'm really happy with it, I hope you stick with it forever. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your contributions. Really helped, yeah. Thank you all the administrators who came today, including Heather, who stayed with us.
Yes.
Great brass, I did notice you stayed with us. Thank you all the governing board members who have contributed, and your team, they, they did a great job. So we have no further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned now.
And we do have lunch.
We're in the conference room.
Yes, right.
I grabbed something.